All right, Dr. Snakes, we got you now. We have the audio. We can hear you now, so we'll move forward with you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I've come up with some preliminary forecasts to see what this situation might look like economically. I don't think you need an economics professor to tell you that we're currently in a deep recession in the U.S. economy. When it began, I think, remains yet to be determined. Maybe it certainly would have begun in April. And our baseline forecast at the Institute is it should be four to six months in duration. We think it's going to be deeper than the Great Recession was of 2008. And it's not a traditional recession. That is, it's not really a function of the natural mechanisms of the business cycle as economies move through periods of expansion into recessions and then back out of recessions into subsequent expansions. This has been effectively a recession that has been instigated by public health measures. And these measures by shutting down large swaths of the economy have effectively pushed the economy into recession. And so the length and the depth of the recession will be a function of the extent and the length of time which the public health measures will remain in effect. And the recovery itself, once the recession has ended, will also be shaped by the impact of these public health measures, how long they remain in place. Basically, you know, the longer we're in a situation where we've got, you know, shelter at home or in large sections of our economy not functioning, the deeper the recession and the longer it takes to recover. I think the recovery has the potential to be very sharp by the time we get into the second half of the year. But the longer we sort of stay under these, you know, heavy-handed public health directives, the more difficult that recovery is going to be. My assumptions for the U.S. forecast here, thinking that the lockdown will begin to be lifted in June. It may be done in a piecemeal, stepwise fashion. And as a result, economic growth should come back. It'll be pretty modest in the third quarter of 2020, then accelerating into the fourth quarter. The labor market's recovery, I think, will take a little more time. I think despite all the measures in the CARES Act and measures at the state and local level, a lot of small businesses may not come out of this pandemic in terms of still being viable and still being operational. They just don't have the reserves that larger companies. Again, that's a little bit uncertain, too. There's just some announcements coming across the wire about additional small business assistance. You know, the federal government did move in record time with the CARES Act. So again, I think this could soften and change the outlook going forward, depending on how they're implemented and how quickly the assistance gets to those who need it. The outlook than the one I'm presenting you, you know, we really don't know what the mortality rate is of this COVID-19. If we get a randomized study of a large sample of the population for antibodies and get a better sense of how deadly the virus is, that could impact how the health measures could be changed, that could impact how the public at large sort of views the overall situation because, you know, I think fear to continue to be an important factor going forward, especially along the way we is in lockdown. So if we, you know, get some good news, get some good data, the projections, the University of Washington model, I think the mayor alluded to, they have been shifting the peak date here in Florida closer rather than further away. That's a good thing. And so we may begin to see a recession in June in the best-case scenario. And it could be worse. If these lockdowns, you know, slip into the summer, extend through the summer, or I think the worst-case scenario is we have to go through a second round of these later in the year, then, you know, I think this extremely deep recession, you know, has the potential to become something much worse. But again, we're in the last year, so it's really difficult to pinpoint the path. But I'm going to focus on that baseline case and see what it means for, you know, for the economy. We think that GDP, this is start national, go to the state, and then down to Orlando, GDP is going to contract for the full year of 2020 by over 5%. That's a reaction in the worst year of the last recession. But a potentially strong bounce back when we get into 2021. The unemployment rate, which was at record lows, is going to climb upwards. Payroll job loss is going to be significant. And, you know, we're seeing that with the onslaught of the high-frequency data that we have, the unemployment insurance claims, you know, the millions that are flooding in and, you know, really overwhelming a system that was just not built for this type of influx of applications. So, you know, consumers are unable to spend. And with all the job losses, those folks will be cutting back. Well, what does it look like in terms of quarterly movement through this? The second quarter is going to be particularly ugly. We think we'll see GDP contracting at over 26% at an annual rate. The unemployment rate will continue to climb through the end of the year, reaching the peak that it reached of the unemployment at the, in the Great Recession. And you can see the job losses are quite significant, again, in the second and third quarter. And then the labor market starts to recover as we move towards the end of the year. Consumers, of course, are hard hit by this crisis and subsequently the, a pretty big hit as well. What about statewide? You know, again, the economy was in pretty good shape prior to the pandemic. I mean, it was a historically strong labor market. Unemployment rates, you know, were down around 3% earlier in the year. We think the state's economy will contract by over 5% this year. Unemployment rate, and these are annual averages, will continue to climb. There will be significant job losses continuing. And we'll get here shortly, it'll look at the different sectors and what we're thinking, how they may be impacted by all this. Quarter-by-quarter look at what's going to be happening statewide. You know, it's pretty good for the next several quarters in Florida. You know, tourism is really taking a devastating hit, and that's such an important component of the state's economy. You can see that the unemployment rate continues to climb to the end of the year. And you can see the payroll job losses are significant over the next several quarters. Looking at jobs in total, what we're going to expect to lose going from the beginning of 2020 until we get to the end of 2020, I think there'll be over 766,000 payroll jobs lost statewide. Construction jobs, special business services, significant job loss. Most of that is coming in business support-type industries. Leisure and hospitality, as you might expect, you know, particularly hard hit. Retail is also going to see significant job losses as we go through the course of the What about here in the Orlando metro area? You know, I think we're going to certainly feel the pain. We're going to see a drop in metro GDP of close to $8 billion. Unemployment will continue to rise. We had the best labor market by far prior to this pandemic. And this pandemic and the public health measures and the decisions by individual companies here have really hit the region's economy particularly hard. Payroll job losses will be significant. You know, I think the worst of it is hitting here in terms of the economy in this second quarter of the year, April, May, and June. Again, the assumption is, you know, we start to loosen some of these restrictions in June. We expect incorporating a July reopening of our major attractions. But that won't just be a resumption to, you know, a large number of visitors that we were enjoying prior to the pandemic. It will take some time for that to rebuild. What sectors are going to be hit in the metro area? This is over the course of 2020, different sectors and the timing. We're projecting that they bottom out. It will vary. So this gives the total loss in payrolls over the course of 2020 from the start of the year to whenever that bottom might be. And so we think we hit the bottom in terms of payroll job losses in the third quarter of this year in Orlando with a total loss since the beginning of the year of 97,500 jobs. Construction, you could see, job bottoming out in the fourth quarter of the year. Leisure and hospitality, the low point is the second quarter, you know, assuming our assumptions play out, and over 109,000 jobs lost in that sector. Education and health sector is impacted. You know, you might think that somehow this is a boom in the health services sector, but because of concerns of the pandemic and fear of being overwhelmed, many providers are no longer providing, you know, services that they, under normal circumstances, would be doing. So elective procedures are being delayed, and that's a significant amount of economic activity in that sector. The, you know, the situation is pretty rough, and I think that the next several months here are going to be the worst of it economically and not by coincidence. They will coincide with the public health measures being in place. But as those measures lift, the economy will begin to heal. You know, I think as much as people love to spend time with their loved ones, you know, being cooped up because of stay-at-home and social distancing measures, I think when things do open up, people will be ready to get out there and to enjoy, you know, what our economy has to offer. The question is, will that take place and how much damage will be done to the economy in the meantime? And, you know, we wait and see, I guess, the answer to that question. But we will continue to update our outlook. This is a very fast-changing economic situation. It makes 2008 seem like a walk in the park in terms of having to redo forecasts because of significant policy changes or significant changes in other environmental variables. So we will, at the Institute, continue to update this, to provide additional scenarios as we move forward, and we'll certainly be sharing it with Orange County, with you, Mayor, and the Commission and staff to, and navigating the process of, you know, this pandemic and its economic and budgetary implications.
Dr. Snakes, thank you. I think that was very comprehensive. I'm going to go to our board members for questions. And since I started with District One the last time, this time I'll start with District Two. Commissioner Moore, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I think I'm going to come back to my original question. If Dr. Snakes, from a purely economic perspective, could talk to us about, a little more specifically in these different sectors, of how, when the health crisis is lifted, how we're going to get back to the healthy economy we had prior?
Well, you know, I mean, I think, as I said, that initially in my remarks, the path that the economy is going to follow during the recession, as well as the path that we're going to follow as we emerge out of it, are going to really depend on how the pandemic plays itself out, and in particular with regard to, you know, public health measures. You know, the longer measures remain in place, I think the more lasting some of the damage will be. You know, there's, you know, large companies have access to resources, have reserves that, you know, a small hair salon or a family-run restaurant or, you know, a notary doesn't have. And so the longer, sort of, remain under the, under these lockdown conditions, you know, where we're keeping the lights out and large segments of the economy, I think the more difficult the recovery will be. You know, the other element is, I think the longer it, things remain in place like that, the more, the greater the erosion of confidence, both business and consumer confidence will be. And so, you know, that starts to make a quick bounce back a more difficult prospect. You know, if we can see some good data in terms of what the true fatality rate of the virus is, if we make progress on treating it, you know, a vaccine still seems maybe more than a year out. Get some therapeutic treatment that can take some of the fear, residual fear that might be there. You know, I think, you know, as we saw in 2008, you know, tourism, leisure and hospitality in Florida rebounded quite strongly, you know, once the, once the economic and financial situation stabilized in the U.S. economy. And, you know, I think that can happen again, you know, if that fear isn't there and if we're able to, you know, relatively quickly, you know, turn the economy back on again. And, you know, I'm, early in this crisis, there was very little discussion about the costs of these various public health measures. It was all about the benefit. And that's fine. But I think the policy has to look at both. And that's starting to happen. And I think, you know, as these numbers come in, the shock and cost to our economy and to, you know, society for that matter, these public health measures, you know, we're going to have to make some trade-offs going forward. I don't think it's going to be an easy set of decisions, but, you know, this may be something we have to learn to live with as we do, you know, with the...
Okay. Commissioner Moore, anything else?
No, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Uribe.
Dr. Snakes, thank you for all the information, the realities of the numbers we're seeing. My question to you is the commercial impact. We're seeing a lot of residential support, obviously unemployment, but we're not really seeing any part of business protection. There are a lot of businesses out there that can only thrive according to how much business they come through their door. There is no real set cushion, you know, for property, paying your rent on your commercial property and so forth. So my concern is, when we do rebound, which I full, you know, faithfully believe, are we going to have a problem with businesses still being able to reopen? I think that's one of the difficult things. But then on the positive, unlike natural disasters, we're not having, you know, buildings torn down and rebuilding, which a lot of times insurance will cover. But my concern more is, will a business that was, you know, barely, you know, coming in and out with the money to make it survive, not having any income in but still required to pay some fees and, you know, bills, will they be able to actually reopen? And will that affect our labor pool?
Yeah. No, I think you're right. You know, this is a fluid situation. There is small business assistance, how quickly and how effective that will be in helping businesses like the ones you've described, that, you know, I think they are the ones most at risk, that, you know, people coming in. You know, they need foot traffic, they need cash flow, and they don't have that under these public health circumstances. I suspect that, you know, despite the best efforts of the federal government and the state and what we can do locally, is that some of these businesses will not survive the shutdown, the public health shutdown. You know, I think it will be businesses that, you know, were operating at the margin at a time when the economy was thriving, let alone in a situation where the economy's gone dark in many sectors. And so, again, the survival rate in terms of businesses are going to depend on how long we're exposed to these public health measures. You know, I think people will be, you know, in terms of going out to eat, to have a beer or to go shopping, will be ready to do that. And it's just a matter of, you know, when is that going to happen? When are we going to, you know, get the green light to, you know, to turn the economy back on? The sooner that happens, whether it's in graduated steps or, you know, one grand reopening, the better off we'll be with the survival of establishments that, you know, are being harmed.
And I have one follow-up, and that's regarding investment. You know, we've seen a lot here at the county, tremendous growth when it comes to the housing market, commercial and development. Are we going to see a rollback of investment in our community when it comes to development and the future going forward?
Well, you know, I think it will depend on how quickly the economy comes back. I think it will depend on, you know, the tourism sector of our economy. I mean, I know that the county worked hard, you know, for 20 years or so on diversifying the region's economy and in anticipation, maybe not of this specific event, but in anticipation of a sector-specific shock. And this is, you know, affects tourism, but it affects other sectors as well. But, you know, this is an example of, you know, trying to get some of our eggs out of that basket, and I think that will make this episode less severe. You know, this was a hotbed of growth. I think it's likely to return to that. How quickly we get back there, you know, again, will depend, you know, how quickly we can turn the economy back on, not just here in the region, but nationally. You know, I think the long-run prospect is still strong for the region. I don't think pandemic changes those trends.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. Commissioner Gomez-Cudero?
I'm here. Sorry.
Any questions?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Doctor, for all the information. And the question that I had actually was to investment and the recession, but you already answered it, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Banilla?
Yes, just testing if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. All right, so a couple of things. I know with the economy, one thing that I always thought would be a good idea is if local economies are sustainable, where we're not dependent on imports of essential products. And I think this situation here, this crisis, has shown kind of the bad side of always importing and having manufacturing overseas, where if they have, like, if China is our main manufacturer of a product and they have a situation like this, that they're not able to manufacture, then if we need that product, then we're in trouble. So I'm wondering if moving, I'm, I would like to hear your feedback on what the future looks like on a couple of scenarios. Like, what, they don't know the immunity of this yet, so they don't know if people could get reinfected within a month or so, or what a vaccine will even look like, because if there's no long-term immunity, it might be difficult to create a vaccine. We are in this situation where we're kind of living now in a, you know, our, our personal space becomes a permanent six-feet distance, six-foot, you know, distance. What would that look like for our economy in the future? We're seeing more essential products and businesses being more important than the luxuries. Also, working from home, people now experiencing this for the first time, are businesses going to start doing that more often, seeing that, hey, this may work out for us and our employees are more productive. And a lot of companies were hesitant to do paid sick leave and provide health insurance or even for part-timers, health insurance. If we had, if everyone had the availability for paid health insurance, then everyone will be able to stay home if they're sick to prevent a spread of any pandemic-type of virus. So why will our future of our economy locally look like? And would it be a good idea for, as far as diversification with our local economy, that we start doing some manufacturing here of essential products and encourage not dependent on imports?
Yeah, well, you touched on a number of things, and I'll try to, I'll try to get through the list. I think that this pandemic, in particular China's response and lack of forthrightness in providing data that might have, might have lessened the severity of the pandemic globally. And dependency, as you said, on, you know, we saw the earlier report, the county's waiting for thousands and thousands of units of protective gear that we can't get, many of which were being produced in China. And so I think the globalization that had been involved for decades will be reevaluated in the wake of this pandemic. Talking about medications that may be essential to treat this virus, and they're not being produced in the United States. You know, I think things, things will change. I don't know how drastically, I don't know how quickly, but I don't think anyone in a situation like this wants to wait for a shipment from a country that, you know, may not have our best interests at heart quite frankly. So that may change. Working from home, telemedicine, I think some of those changes were already afoot and were just accelerated here by the pandemic. I don't know, we're a social animal. I hope we don't have to stay six feet from each other the rest of our lives. But, you know, we may have to learn to live with this virus until we have effective vaccine and/or effective way to treat it, once someone has contracted it. And there's just not a lot of data right now for me to say to you how much this will change things. Is this going to end up like another version of seasonal flu or another version of the H1N1 virus? I mean, we have seen several of these episodes, SARS, MERS, H1N1, now COVID-19, sort of affect the global population and help the structure and also the economy. Yeah, I mean, I think these kind of communicable diseases, they're not going to just disappear even after we deal with this one. There'll be another that jumps, you know, from animals to humans, and we're going to have to figure out a way to handle it. I just hope it's a better way than what we've been forced to do right now.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, Mayor. I don't actually have a...
Yes, Mayor. Um, I don't actually have a question for the doctor, but as we talk about the economic, uh, situation that we're facing, I just would like a report from our finance department on the current bonds that we have, and also some of our interest rates, and how is that looking, and some of the investments that we have as a county, and how we're monitoring that. Um, that's some of the information that I would like to see, um, at our next meeting on when it comes down to, how is the county handling, um, their investments and looking at the interest rates and, you know, are they gonna decline and how much are they going to be, uh, reduced? And also, you know, we're talking about, in the economic situation we're in, we're seeing a lot of stocks that are plummeting. And so I would encourage people, if disposable income, this would be a great time to start investing in some of those stocks where, uh, we know they, some of them now have become very affordable. So, um, I just wanted to make those comments.
All right. Um, uh, thank you, Commissioner, and we'll have, um, Randy work with the comptroller and kind of give a report on our fiscal health and status overall. Okay? Thank you. Uh, we'll go to, uh, District One, Commissioner Vanderly.
Hi, I'm having trouble with the mute button. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay. Evidently I have to hit two buttons. So, um, I just want to echo what you said in terms of interest rates and bond rates and all of that, and, and looking for the opportunity in this. And perhaps with the combination of, of data, um, social sciences and soothsaying, perhaps Dr. Sneed can speak to, um, what the opportunities might look like going forward in this economy financially as well.
Uh, so public finance opportunities or?
Yes.
Uh, well, I, I mean, certainly, you, one, one reason for optimism, uh, that the recovery could be, you, a very sharp one, is in fact what's happened to interest rates, uh, not just the action of the Federal Reserve, uh, Bank to, to cut short-term interest rates, but what's happened to, you know, uh, government bond, uh, yields with the 10-year yield, the now, you know, well below 1%. Um, you know, financing costs, uh, have been pushed down, uh, at least as far as market interest rates are concerned. And so that, that may present itself with an opportunity. I, I, I'm not gonna, um, overstep my bounds here. I'm sure the county finance people, uh, know much more than I do. Um, you know, the one caveat is, um, you know, will credit worthiness, uh, buy this, especially if, uh, we don't see the kind of bounce back in, in some of our key sectors, uh, that I think we're gonna have. But in terms of the cost of borrowing with, with market rates, unbelievably low.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you, Dr. Sneed, uh, for, uh, working with us on this presentation. Um, I'm sure at some point we engage you as we learn more about it.